Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Krafcheck? Mr. Parsick?
Here.
Mr. Dallahan?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape Cod County Herald on January 4th, 2019. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Krafcheck is running late and will be coming in in probably 10 or 15 minutes. We'll start with A and F.
Okay, do we want to do the special event application first?
Hi, good afternoon. I just have one special event application that's circulating right now. It's an annual event. It's the Brown family sand castles, the family that comes down every year. This, the date is July 30th. It's a Tuesday. The rein date for it is the 31st, from 11 to 6. And it's between 92nd and 93rd Street on the beach. And they're just requesting a, a large mound of sand for the public works to create for them, and they build a large sand castle there every year at a family reunion. They have like 50 or 60 family members. And they, I do have the insurance for that. Just waiting on the signatures from all the departments right now.
Something Public Works has been doing for several years. They're on board and everything.
Yep.
Okay.
And that's, that's, and that's all I have as far as special events. And we're ready for the 4th of July and the big...
Are we all ready?
Well, still final details. I don't know. But yeah, we're, we're, we're ready. Good.
The, the insurance policy that I have on my package is his homeowner's policy.
His homeowner's, is that supposed to cover that, I believe?
It's supposed to what?
It covers that event. That's what we asked for.
It does?
As long as they list us as the second insured on there.
That's what he's given us in the past for it.
Okay.
And it does name the borough as an additionally insured.
Okay.
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 Thank you, Jenny.
All right, engineer's report.
Okay, thank you. All of the original and added work for the 2018 utility and road program is completed. At the request of the borough, we are preparing a change order for the resurfacing of Paradise Drive from 114th Street to the end. We're hoping to have that change order prepared in a manner of consideration at the next council meeting. Next, we continue to work on the following capital projects. The 2019 utility and road program, the 114th Street sanitary sewer pump station improvements, and the beach ADA ramp and pavilion replacement. So the 2019 utility and road program will probably be out to bid October of this year, somewhere to the 19, and it'll carry through into 2020. In regard to Smuggler's Cove, the architectural and structural site visits are complete, and we are scheduled to finalize our report next week. In regard to the new lifeguard building, we have an initial concept design meeting scheduled for next Monday, July 8th. Lastly, the borough's NJDOT grant application for the reconstruction of 106th Street is currently being worked on and is scheduled to be submitted to the state by the July 19th deadline. That is my report.
Mark, I missed the street numbers for Paradise Drive.
From 114th Street to the southern terminus, which is a cul-de-sac.
Okay, thank you. To the bridge, all the way around?
I guess it runs parallel to Ocean Drive, and then it just kind of bows in and does a cul-de-sac, so that, that whole run.
To the bridge?
Yes, yes, yep.
That's not been done at all.
And that's just going to be your resurfacing job, is what I understand.
Oh, yeah.
Because there's a lot of, looks like a couple bombs were dropped in the street. You have dirt protruding through the asphalt, so.
Yeah, it's...
We need to, before I forget, we, we need to schedule a public works meeting in the near future, maybe before you go to your, finish your concept design on the, on the life sa, or the lifeguard's building.
Oh.
So we can get some, you know, we have some, we just need to discuss a couple of things, so if you, you and Kim could schedule that soon.
We have one scheduled in August.
Too late.
You want one sooner?
Yeah, yeah, sooner.
Okay.
We could, before we go too far down that path, and then we're changing things that he did.
Absolutely.
So we can all get on the same page.
Okay. Is that it for Mark? Okay. Tax collector?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Council. This is the time of year we wait with bated breath for our tax rate to be struck. Once that happens, I'll calculate our tax appeals, which we only have 10 this year. Tax bill mailings, the tax bills have to be out by the 19th. If they're not out by the 19th, then we extend the grace period per statute. I designate it September 11th for my annual tax sale, which is a Wednesday. In the utility department, on June 12th, we did our shut offs. We sent 29 notices out on April 4th. We sent a final notice out on May 21st, and we discontinued service at A31 Bauer Court. Board of Health was notified on that. Irrigation violations, so far this year, we have six. Last year at this time, we had three. The total in 18 was 16. 2017, we had 15. 2016, for the total summer, we had 58. And in 2015, we had 48. So you can see that people are complying to that violation or that schedule. Handhelds are out collecting the meters for our critical read period, and that's all I have. Does anyone have questions?
Did you say you sent out 29 shut off?
I did.
And only one?
Okay. Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay.
Thank you.
Tax professor?
Good afternoon. Well, we've come to the end of the sampling period for this year. Actually, it runs on the, oh my gosh, I lost my train of thought. It runs from July 1st to June 30th. What do you call that?
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year. Brain freeze. Anyway, so in 2018, we had a total of 230 sales, well deeds, I should say. Of those 230, 125 of them were usable, 105 of them were nonusable. And of the nonusable sales, we had five new construction, six demos, and two private sales. In 2017, we had 215 sales, or deeds, I should say. 105 were usable, 110 were nonusable. So we're about 15 ahead for this past sampling period. Other than that, yeah, I'm waiting for the tax rate. We still have tax court cases going on, and I'm just keeping up with the flow. Any questions?
Doesn't appear to be.
Thank you.
Construction and zoning.
Ah, there he is. Thought he was skipping out on me. Okay. Last year, there were, what a difference in demolitions last year. There were zero in June and eight this year. So it was a difference with, I guess, the ordinance change probably spurred that. New houses, within one, there were seven last year and about eight this year, new house permits that were issued. The, we did request an ordinance change for our fee schedule for electrical. Our program that we use, Roadrunner, is designed to automatically input the fees as Suzanne puts the, the calculations in there, or the numbers for the fixture units that go in. It didn't reflect the same thing that the auditors were seeing on, on paper. So we had to, we had to change the fee schedule to reflect what the permitting program that we have, how it spits it out. So they, so they added up, everything added up to say. That was a request by the accountants to be able to do that, to make it simple for them to audit. That's all I have.
Okay, this year, for June, the CT, title transfers were the same as last year, so we're back to normal. It was crazy in May before that, but we had the same amount, six. Zoning permits were down by six. Street openings were down by three for June this year versus last year. The Marina zoning board approved the Marina yesterday night where the parking lot is between Mr. Sandman's house and Gina Marconi's house. They're going to do the Marina, redo the parking lot, and put a small building there. That got approved last night unanimously, pending several conditions for the project. That will, the Marina will have to come before council because it does cross the property line, the back property line, and whenever a pier or dock crosses over into borough property, so you will be looking for that coming, and they, they will have plans for you for that, I'm sure. We're, we're working on in zoning and landscape ordinance. We're going to try to look for that coming up pretty soon. We're reviewing all the other shore communities to see what they have right now and see what fits for Stone Harbor. I'm finding that most of them are maintaining the trees that are, they're not, not what we're looking for, but we'll, we'll do what we can for trees. Business registrations are, there's 166 total. We received 140, 146. There were two more just came in earlier today. So we're only lacking 20 business registrations for this year. The remaining 20 will be paying a, the $50 penalty for late fee as of July 1st, and they've all been notified that as of July 19th, violations will go out for those that don't have their business registration to us by the 19th. Any questions?
Just by way of clarification for what the reeds got approved last night is what crossed the street from Uncle Bill's, that what has been a parking lot there, they got approved for, I want to say 20 parking spaces, I don't remember the exact number, 20 parking spaces that will be overflow from the reeds and will be valeted in there. They got approved for eight dock slips that will be short-term usage where you pull up, get out, you can either get out and shop on the business district, or you can go to any establishment, lunch, whatever. It's almost like parking for boats to then, you can get off and then just go to the business district. They got approved for, it's one bathroom and a storage building. I don't remember the dimensions.
24 by 24.
24 by 24. And what else of significance? There's a walkway open to the public that's going to get you back to where the boats are, and then a walkway in front of the boat slips. That is, of course, a condition of their CAFRA permit, there has to be public access. So that will be there as well. And also part of the public access required a bathroom, so they did put in a bathroom as well.
And the bulkhead will be elevated.
And the bulkhead will be going to eight feet. Because you keep hearing Marina, and you're thinking this, and, you know, but it's, and they'll be getting that overflow for their parking, which we keep hearing a lot of complaints about parking concerning the reeds. So there'll be an overflow that they'll be valeting there. So just to clarify, so people heard exactly what's going to be going there. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay.
Have a good port, everybody.
Thank you. And you guys stay around for our ordinances we're going to discuss. Don't sneak out.
I told Ray he has to stay. Mike's going to go back, but Ray has to stay.
Do we want Mike for the bulkheads? So he hears what we say, or no?
Yeah, the office is closed right now because...
That's why.
Oh, okay. All right.
Ray can relay it back.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to speak a little bit.
Okay.
Just told Diane. Okay, CFO?
Okay. I had two revenues I went to report on, two seasonal revenues. Beach tag sales, as of June 30th, there were 630,000, which is slightly more than last year. And parking revenues, right now it's 118,000, but slightly less than last year, but there were some issues with the kiosks and the modems, which I think have been resolved. All the revenues look in line, and budgets are where you'd expect them at halfway through the year.
Borough Clerk?
Borough Clerk's report, and we had beach shed amount, we did business registrations, boat trailers, sale craft permits, certified copies, parking permits, public performances, club licenses for liquor, beach concession, marriage licenses, and boat slips. Dogs and cat permits were issued. Our total for the month, $40,384.60. In the construction office, their total taken in for the month was $16,037.
Planning Board report?
Planning Board was held on Monday, June 10th. The, there was a slide presentation for the master plan reexamination report. It was the public hearing, discussed at that time specific details that were outlined, and it was all done by our planning board engineer, Paul Cates. It was a well-attended meeting. There was a lot of people from the public who had different comments, things to say. A couple of things of interest was, one of the things was an accompanying 10-year budget along with the master plan. So what, we basically advised the public that that is the role of Borough Council, to have that 10-year financial plan working towards the goals and the things outlined within the master plan. Other things that were brought up was smoke stacks, and this had been brought before council in the past, where some of these outdoor fireplaces are causing some discomfort with neighbors, with, you know, the way that our housing is and close proximity, and if that is something that council should, I don't know that that is a planning board issue, or where that should go for any further discussion. I think it was brought before us maybe two years ago. It's been some time. If that's something that we would like to look at...
Public safety, we should talk about.
If you want to talk about that in public safety, okay.
Fire and everything.
And see if, I don't, I, how many of these existing ones, would you, you know, grandfather people, would you switch them over to gas? What would you do? But it would, it does come up, so that's something that could be discussed in, in public safety then. It was unanimously adopted, the, for the public hearing, I mean, for the reexamination? Trying to think if there's anything else, and I don't think so. Jill, do you remember anything else? I'm referring to the minutes in front of me, and that's the highlights that were in the minutes, if there's anything else that was in there? Or any other things that the public said?
Other than the courts maybe changing in the court?
Oh, yes, that would probably be the, that would be the other thing that was a, a concern is, what's the action plan for these items now? And whose responsibility is it to move forward with action items? So we're going to discuss that at the next meeting, how to prioritize some of the action items. One of them may be the increased square footage that would be permitted on the courts. So that may be one where you'll see a change in the zoning come forward to council. The other priorities, I think that, I can't remember what the other ones were, historic preservation?
I think there's three, right? I mean, the, the courts, and then, and then your, your initiative on outside dining is one you're going to address.
That we want to try to continue with, yes.
And then your floor area ratio, you're going to look at that too going.
The floor area ratio, I suspect, is not going to be a priority.
Right, well...
I don't think that'll become a priority.
Well, that's a decision then in and of itself.
Yeah, I think, as you see the prioritizing, we've been, the courts, I think you'll see that become a priority based on the discussions will be what's happening with the courts. And it was brought up, was it in the master plan to bring these big poles down? Where is that in the master plan? So that is also something to be discussed as far as a priority, and is that still something that council wants to entertain? We're still in, as a matter of fact, we really have not received the feasibility study completed yet that was authorized, so.
Because I remember, we talked about it in the master plan meetings, and then there was a plan to do a...
The feasibility study got some, it, it went like halfway, then stopped.
Could it go anywhere?
Yes. Yeah, it began, there was a couple of meetings, yeah, there was a couple of meetings with ACE and a couple of things to see, you know, to, for the borough or for somebody, not the, I guess it would be the borough, to do the civil engineering aspect, not, and the electrical engineering would be with Atlantic City Electric. So there was, there was initial discussion and a report started, yes. I'd say two years ago. And then the master plan kind of took precedence, and now we did, and it was brought up, and Paul Cates was told, go back to that feasibility study concerning the poles. And that was it. Any questions on planning board?
Yes. I attended the planning board meeting, and I was disappointed with the fact that the planning board itself did not develop a series of priorities with respect to the wish list that they, that they had prepared. And my presumption is that the planning board is in direct contact with the homeowners of Stone Harbor, and they get their input and feedback from homeowners. And for them to put out a, a report with no sense of priority on any of the things that were listed in the planning board report, I think is a waste of time.
But that is the goal at the next meeting.
The next meeting for, for us, or...
No, for planning board.
I don't understand how you can do a report without prioritizing what's in the report. That, that makes no sense to me.
Certain things, I don't remember the exact number, 10 items you must include. Recreation, wayfinding, things of that, some things you have to do. You've got to follow certain guidelines. So within those certain guidelines, we identified what in Stone Harbor needs to be addressed, maintained, looked for in the future, in each of those areas. Now we're going to go back and prioritize of each of those areas, which one is the priority? Is recreation activities going to take priority over the zoning changes perhaps for the courts? No. That, but we still had to identify in each area needs and wants of Stone Harbor. So now we'll be, how do we start to address all of them? What becomes top, top priority and what becomes lower priority? So since you're, since we're relegated or, or we're charged with specific areas we need to identify, so in other words, if there, if some of it, recreation needs perhaps might not even be addressed, if you didn't have to, because, you know, in my opinion, our recreation programs and our recreation facilities are meeting the needs. So you look, okay, how could we enhance them? And that's why we say it's a visionary document. How could we enhance them? Are we going to prioritize enhancing them at this time? I mean, I'm not speaking for everybody, but sitting on that board for two and a half years, I'm going to say it's not going to be a priority. So you follow the state regulations on doing the reexamination, then we'll go to the prioritizing. Anybody else? So we want to bring that in now, like you're saying, and that is the goal now, prioritize. And we are in touch or in, in, in contact with the public as much as the, as the public gives us feedback as well, you know what I mean? We encourage people to attend planning board meetings, and the, the minutes are posted online, and we welcome input, and that's what's going to help us prioritize. And one of the reasons why the courts is going to be a priority is because we had probably close to 60 people come out to express concerns, interests, in that element of the master plan. Anybody else? Okay. So we have a couple of ordinances, four, to discuss under A and F. First is the bulkheads as the new construction order, as the new construction ordinance applies to bulkheads. Was it our intention? Was it not? What happened here is the construction office, in interpreting the new construction ordinance, is not allowing bulkheads to be put in in July and August based on the fact that there is no driving of pilings for the period of July 1 until the Friday immediately following Labor Day. So up for discussion is, how do we feel about allowing bulkheads in those couple of months in an effort to continue moving forward in a proactive way on our flood mitigation plans? So I welcome comments from everyone.
I don't think we can, I don't think we can let this ordinance stand in the way of bulkhead progress. I think that's one of our biggest issues, things that we've done in the past couple of years, and I think we need to keep having these bulkheads installed at the proper height as we move forward. It's a big part of the flood mitigation effort. And I think when we, I mean, I know, I voted for these, this ordinance change last year, and I, I, the main reason with the, with the pilings was, the way I saw it and the way it was explained to me and argued back and forth, was that after the pilings go in, it's quickly followed by concrete foundation work and whatnot, and then the framing starts immediately after that, so you have a lot of noise generated. So my reasoning for, for supporting that ordinance was to stop that phase of the new construction in July and August. I think bulkheads are a, a different matter. I think bulkheads, the, the priority we've placed on raising bulkheads... I'm sorry, excuse me. Should not, should not be affected by this ordinance, so I would suggest that the ordinance be amended to make that clear to the construction officials, that the bulkhead work should go ahead through July and August.
May I ask how many requests we've had to put bulkheads in during that period of time?
Mike, do you have any idea?
I, I can say four. Like off the top of my head, not, not many. And that could change either, either way, depending on how the ordinance goes.
Yeah, if the ordinance changes, I'm pretty sure that...
I'm not so sure an ordinance change is necessary. If you read the, the strict definition of what's in there, no demolition and no driving of pilings for the period of July 1 until Fri... So this indicates driving of pilings. When, when bulkheads are installed, everyone knows that really the only technical insertion of pilings is the dead men pilings, and those are jetted in with water jets. There's no pounding, there's no invasive insertion of, of these pilings. So I don't, it says driving of pilings. I don't know that a change is necessary because that envisioned someone out there pounding a piling into the ground until it meets the, you know, the proper poundage or tonnage of resistance. So again...
Part, part of this also was to protect the peace and quiet of neighbors, not just on the bay, because we weren't talking about just the bay for pilings that were put in.
Right. No, I think we were talking specifically about construction, right? That was the impetus behind the whole ordinance, is driving, we're putting a pilings in, and to Ray's point, what ensues thereafter, really. The pilings usually occur in a day, day and a half, then it's what ensues afterwards with concrete trucks, footings, rebar, cutting a block.
Right.
That's really the nature of this ordinance, in my mind, is what spurred it, is that, hey, if, if you want to get that done, let's do it early enough so that you get all that other heavy work out of the way by the time the season's in full swing, so...
But I understand where you're coming from, and I'm just going to say my quick two cents, is that putting in a, a bulkhead during the summer, if you are one of the neighbors in July and August when that is happening, or it is your property, or it's rented, or whatever, it certainly is a disruption that would not be much fun if you came down to stay for a week or two weeks.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Yes, this is more...
It's machines that they use to do it that are going to be more disruptive, or just as disruptive as driving pilings. Even though they do jet them in, that's the quiet part.
Sure.
As far as not making noise with the, with the, you know, consistent pounding of it, but the machines that they bring in, the crane... But the machines that they bring in, the cranes, are still, they're still loud. They're heavy machinery.
Sure. And to add to that is the, the bulkhead goes in and it's going in obviously where there was one before. And then does the dock come right after that during the summer too? I mean, I'm just.
More than likely.
I'm just saying if.
So I think we.
Anybody was a neighbor to that.
Well, they wouldn't, they wouldn't leave that site until they had the pier work done or the dock work done. Why would they move their machines and their, and their barges to come back again at a later date? So.
So I personally think we should continue to think about some peace and quiet for a couple of months. I don't think it's gonna throw us out of whack. I think that everybody can plan for it if they know that it's coming.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I understand where you're coming from, Charles. The, the noise level will be different in one aspect, but not in another.
Right. Unfortunately, we're confined to the verbiage of our ordinance and it says clearly, no driving of pilings. So you have, I think, a number of contractors out there that are essentially shut out of Stone Harbor right now. And they, but I think their, their understanding of the ordinance is we don't drive pilings. So we're not really subject to it. And it makes a lot of sense from that standpoint. Now, if that's what this council feels that we should add that, we should go ahead and add an ordinance to reflect that. The only other point I'd bring up is these guys are shut down a lot of times for the dead of winter. When they, it is virtually, you know.
Where they can't, yeah.
Working on the water. You're shut down already two months out of the year. You throw this in, now you've taken up a third of their year to get our bulkheads where they need to be. So, you know, there's that consideration as well. But again, I think my interpretation of this ordinance, I, if I were in your shoes, I would feel compelled to say they're not driving pilings, therefore they're not subject to it. I guess that's an interpretation for you or perhaps for Mr. Caravan to make. But if we wanna go that direction, I think we need to have a separate ordinance because there's.
Well, let's see before, and, and just some, before you weigh in or just wanna make sure that I hear from you guys, what's your feelings on this?
I have a question. What is the, the length of time required to do a bulkhead? Now, I know first.
That's gonna vary.
It depends on the width of the bulkhead. I understand that.
And the contractor and.
Right. But is this, you know, we were told that putting the pilings in was a one-day process. Is this something that we can count on the average of being a one-day process or several-week process?
As far as making a decision on whether they'd be allowed to do it?
No, installing one.
How long would it take to put in a bulkhead?
Yeah, well, I guess my point would be it, it's gonna be tough to, to narrow them down to a certain timeframe to be able to do this, because they do run into problems. They run into existing bulkheads, they run into different things, machine breakdown.
But how about ballpark? Does it take a month? Does it take two weeks?
No, it doesn't take months. No, it could take two weeks.
What, what really is, makes a big difference here is whether NJDEP has granted you permission to go in front of the existing bulkhead or you have to replace in kind. If you have to replace in kind, that's much more involved. So you're now pulling out old bulkhead, keeping that, that fill retained at the same time and then inserting a new one. So obviously much more involved. You come out, put it, you know, generally speaking, they'll allow you go 18, 20, 24 inches in front of the old one. In certain instances, in that area or location, it may be permissible. Then they come out, probably less than a week, because everything's retained already for the most part by the old bulkhead. New sheets come in, they go in pretty quickly. And again, those sheets are jetted in, so there's no driving of sheets or they're just, they're pushed into the, into the, into the.
So on average, a couple of weeks?
Yeah. Looking at it from both sides, it is, you're, you are crunching them into a certain timeframe to be able to do this. So you, you really have to look at it from a lot of different angles to try to get it done.
But by the same token, there are some people who are only here for a couple of weeks. And during those two weeks that they may be here, that's not in their eyes. That's not the two weeks that they wanna see the, the bulkhead go in. We've already had real estate agents tell us that they have had to grant refunds just because of noise that was generated.
That happens on all the single-family homes and any renovations that are going on.
You know that, right. So I think that's something we have to take into consideration with this. We just have to, even if it's just a two-week period, it may be the two weeks that I saved up for all year long.
Yeah. It should really, it should be very specific right from the beginning as far as when, what, how, everything to, to allow it, because if you leave it open, it's just gonna be tough to enforce, you know, one way or the other.
And I certainly appreciate that it is the number one effort that we need to be able to mitigate our flood situation. I understand that, but we also have to respect people who are coming here. We have to find someplace in the middle.
I think, first of all, on the one-day, the one-day piling installations that was mentioned earlier, I think on new construction properties now that they, they basically auger them in, they don't really pound them from the top down, they drill a hole and drop the piling in.
Well, they do that, but they have to get the compressive strength by pounding them down.
They can get, they can get all those pilings in in a day. That's what we're talking about. Because it happens so fast. Bulkheads take, take a little bit longer. I just don't, you know, my, I, I explained why I supported that ordinance on the construction. And I, and I think that the importance of the bulkheads, you know, if, if one or two or four families are inconvenienced, then the real estate agent has to work out how are they gonna take care of that? That's very unfortunate. However, I don't think we should let that stand in the way of the progress we've made so far. And we have a long way to go with these bulkheads. I mean, we're, we got, how many do we have? Eight, 10 of them been put in so far at eight feet in the?
Since the ordinance has been enacted.
Take a two-month sabbatical from it, I think. I just think it's a mistake. I think we got some momentum, we need to keep going with it.
I'd like to understand a little bit more, and I'm, I'm not familiar with it. So I'd like to understand more the, the difference between driving the pilot versus using an auger to be able to set the pilings.
What are?
Well, in the, in the case of a bulkhead, it's, so on an average home, you might have, what, between 80 and 100 pilings?
Around there.
So normally on a, on a normal construction site, they'll come over and they'll drive what's called a test pile. And they'll hit that until it resists pounding up to a certain compressive strength, usually 12-ton capacity. That involves blows by a big piece of equipment onsite. Generally, once they get that depth and the length they need to use for those pilings, the rest of them are augered. Big corkscrew comes in, they'll drill the hole and they drop it in, because they know that depth will meet it. They don't go around, and, and it may vary on some jobs where they do, where they have different softer areas where they do have to impact those, every piling or more than one. Generally speaking, that's the situation for construction. On a bulkhead, it's very different. You usually only have several what are called dead men piling. And that's, there's a big bolt that goes through the face of the bulkhead with the big square whaler that supports the wall that's attached to that dead man piling, okay? So you only have several of them across the back of the property. So in terms of number of pilings that are installed night and day, you're probably talking six, seven versus 80 to 100. And when they put those pilings in on a bulkhead, they're jetted in with water. So they, they don't need to meet that 12-ton capacity, because there's nothing above them. It's really lateral strength that they're supporting that bulkhead up underneath the grade. So very, very different animals, still a piling, but almost in both cases, there's.
When you, when you, when you waterjet the piling, I mean, you can act, you can stand there and watch them. It's high-pressure water that they're, they're putting into the mud. And you could watch the piling just sink by itself.
Break down, it just goes like this.
So it's, it's a different installation process.
Totally.
And with that different installation process, it's, it's, it sounds as though there's a significant difference in the noise.
It's not as intrusive as.
It's not intrusive. To Mike's point, there's equipment there, which is intrusive. But my, what I'm saying is our ordinance does not address equipment, it addresses pile driving. And so in that instance, I'm of the frame of mind that if we decide as a council that the equipment is invasive, because clearly those dead men piling are not, they're water jetted in, then we should have a new ordinance saying so, because this is not, in my mind, driving of pilings.
Yeah, thanks for the clarification.
Sure.
From my perspective, the, the issue that we face is one of, what's the mission of Stone Harbor? And that's to provide a vacation period for people who come here during the months of July and August. I don't know how many of these bulkheads need to be done in July and August. And perhaps the issue is really one of noise, how much noise is generated by pile driving and the subsequent work of constructing the concrete and the rest of it. What, what the noise level is, is the key issue in the minds of people who live next door to or in the same area that this work would go on.
Another part of this would be if it was a bulkhead failure, that they should be able to immediately at any time put this in. For safety. That they should be allowed to do that.
And you can basically do that whenever you deem it appropriate, correct?
Right.
So hearing all the discussion, how would, how do we interpret the existing ordinance?
So council is certainly free to reach a consensus as to how its ordinance should be interpreted and to direct the construction official accordingly. Problem is, the construction official is your boots on the ground and he has to deal with the public. And the more specific the ordinance is, the easier their job becomes, because they can point to specific things in the ordinance when dealing with the public and their attorneys.
That was the next thing out of my mouth.
Right. So I'm, I'm with you. So although council may reasonably ascribe certain meaning to this ordinance, if there are issues that could be clarified, it will help your construction official by doing that.
One more point back to the discussion. So just let me give you by way of example, I, I get it 100% that it's invasive process, process bulkhead, it's the middle of summer. But I gotta tell you, as a bayfront owner, if my neighbor has derelict bulkhead and he comes in June, July, August, whenever to replace it, and that's failing so much. And I know, we know about this, because we're both on the bay. That's, that derelict bulkhead's leaching fill into the bay. And that, where does that end up? It ends up in your boat slips. Where does that end up? You have to dredge every three, four years. So these failing bulkheads are contributing to buildup of sediment, you know, laterally through the bulkhead, through where it's broken down below the water level, where the whalers are breaking. So my neighbor shows up next to me and he's got a derelict bulkhead, I'm going, bravo. Do it June, July, August, whenever you want, because guess what?
Unfortunately, a lot of them do have those issues.
So I just will say that it's not necessarily always the case that the neighbor is saying, hey, wow, this is July.
Can these bulkheads be prioritized in terms of their condition?
I think we have prioritized them with respect to when you have to come up to height already. So there's a timeline. There's the lowest ones are first on the list that have to comply.
But I think that they were prioritized into two, four, six, eight years. People have to do it. We're ending, are we in year one or two?
We're ending, we should be ending year two, but we're, we're kinda getting off the point. Are we gonna allow them to do bulkheads in July and August or not?
Well, right, or are we, are we not? Right.
Not only talking about the bulkheads that are.
That are derelict.
We're talking about people that are just renewing bulkheads. It's time to renew them.
Have you discussed it with any of the four people who have applied that there might be a problem? Because I, I'm just thinking in terms of when I call someone to do something at our house, they don't come the next day to do it. So if you call someone and say, okay, I want you to come and give us an estimate, we're gonna go through with, they may not even be ready to start doing it until September anyway. So that's my question. You know, are they ready to start?
Unless they have an issue with their bulkhead, I don't think they're gonna do it in the summer anyway, because they wanna be able to utilize that for the summer with their boats and wave runners. Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's gonna be an issue. But, you know, part of the whole process with these bulkheads and, and I think Mark would agree is one of the issues that we, that we hear with any of these failing bulk, or even newer bulkheads that are tied into the adjacent properties is that they're not doing them correct to tie them together. And that's where they're getting that, that breach.
That, that is a common.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to have that sheet slip like right exactly into that.
Or way to attach it.
Yeah, that's if you have vinyl. So sometimes you have different types of materials and you gotta marry it up properly. So that's where a good contractor, you hope, is gonna do that correctly.
I think we've made flood mitigation a top priority for the borough. And our first line of defense is bulkheads. So now we're gonna remove two months out of the year where we're not gonna let bulkhead repair or installation go on.
It's two months, it's two months, excuse me, two months in addition to a couple of months in the bad weather when they can't work. Home builders can, can pretty much schedule their tasks through bad weather, that they work through the year. And when you have bad weather on the water like that, you, you, you're shut down. So we're, you know, we're just, I think we're penalizing ourselves. We're, we're hampering our own efforts to, to try to get where we need to be. That being said, I understand, I get the noise. I get it.
Yeah, it's not just noise. It's not just noise. If a house is pre-existing, I'm talking about one that's already there, and their whole backyard's gotta be pulled in so that they can get this bulkhead in, the material comes from what direction, from the water, from down the sides of the houses? And the permit process for a bulkhead takes how long? Usually to get all the permits that you need?
That could be a week if, if everything's there, if everything's in. Now they're going through the engineer, so it's gonna take.
Through, through locally, it's a week.
Yeah, it could be quick.
I mean, they have to go, don't they have to go someplace besides us?
Well, in the totality, they'd have to go through DEP.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm all for the flood mitigation, everything that we're doing. I'm just trying to visualize right now, today, three or two houses on the bay, July 4th weekend, putting in a bulkhead with neighbors and the traffic and the congestion that we have right now without even having that stuff there.
They're not allowed to work on weekends.
Okay, not.
Or holidays.
Monday through Friday, I still can't imagine the congestion on a back bay property right now with the amount of wonderful people that we have staying here.
I don't think you'll find too many barges out in the water right now anyway.
Yeah.
Unless it's an emergency.
So you could look at it also that way. There's not that many. So has someone come into construction saying they wanna do this and you have denied them at this point? Has that happened?
No, haven't denied any, no.
Okay. Is it a discussion being had in the office? Is anybody?
No, not really.
No?
No.
Well, good, you got ahead of it. You got this good thinking.
Well, I mean, it's.
Right.
They flowed pretty smoothly.
Another look at it is to see whether we want to make some additional adjustments to the ordinance itself.
Well, does.
We've gotten calls about new bulkheads and whether they're allowed to.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Is there, is there discussion within the office? Is the public attempting to do this and they're being denied or they're being discouraged or they're being, like, what's happening?
A, a few contractors have called and asked, and I actually have, we, Jill and I talked about it and we denied them because of the piling issue.
Okay.
Being lumped in.
So they have been denied so far. People have tried and they have been denied. Okay, okay.
Yeah, I know, I didn't know whether you were talking about, like, as far as, there wasn't any real pushback from it. They agreed with it and they were okay with it, because they.
Or they hung up the phone and said, wow, I'm out of work two months this year and we're never gonna get these bulkheads done? They just didn't say it to you, maybe?
Right. Probably not. Well, they didn't to me, no.
Right, okay.
They accepted it and moved on.
We do have a list of the failing bulkheads.
Yes.
Okay, could we identify the failing bulkheads?
Right, that's, that's, I guess, to Ray's point. Ray is saying the failing bulkheads are not necessarily those applying. It's a new house going up. Or, or it's somebody that's doing a renovation or something like that. It's, it's, it's separate from those failing. The failing bulkheads have been identified and have been notified.
So is there a way that they can be encouraged somehow to take action on the bulkheads now and they would be given an exception to this rule?
That, yes, but that doesn't help the person who's not failing per se, but who just is putting in a new house and they're required to get their bulkhead in. So that's the person that Mike is up against.
My, my point is it's a question of priority. Which is most important for us to consider addressing this question? Is it the failing bulkheads or is it a brand-new bulkhead going in for a new house?
I would think, of course, the failing bulkheads are the priority, but they're not the ones coming to Mike right now and being denied.
No. In, in the past, over the years, we've, we've sent letters out for failing bulkheads, which is just a continual thing every year. When we get these, I, most of the time I get them from Public Works and then we address it with a letter with the homeowner. And they're required to do something about it within so many days. We really haven't had, other than it being a, an unsafe structure situation, really. We really haven't had, other than it being a, an unsafe structure situation, really haven't had that much, the, the teeth to be able to go after them legally. And I think that there should be verbiage that.
Right.
You know, as opposed to failing, Frank, I mean, I've always called them the short, the short bulkheads, the bulkheads in there that wanna get replaced. Yeah, it's interesting, because if somebody comes up and says, well, I'm gonna put my new bulkhead in, cause you're making me do it. And then we say, okay, but not right now, can't do it right now, that, that doesn't look too good, either, does it?
Exactly. We're one of the few boroughs with that foresight.
Frank used the word exception and maybe, in that kind of an instance, an exception is warranted, you know, to get that short bulkhead off the water pond.
So to Reese's point, do we go back and look at it, craft different languages, or a consensus that we allow it? And what is your pleasure and where to take it from here?
We, we have the foresight to enact one of the, one of the most progressive bulkhead ordinances in New Jersey, going to eight feet. So, we take this dramatic step, we're thinking far in the future, and we say, let's get there as quickly and as efficiently as possible, but then now we turn around and say, all right, well, you essentially can't do them for four months, one-third of the year in Stone Harbor. I think it makes, it's not even a close call for me, we need to forge ahead and get the bulkheads installed, get them to where they need to be so that we're protected when the big one comes, or big ones come. I think mainly because it's more of a necessity for this is with mitigation than it would be for a new single-family house going up. That it's smarter to let, allow them to do that because of this.
Well, that's the entire reason behind it is a flood mitigation, like I said, we, we have decided we are gonna be proactive and it's non-stop priority, flood mitigation, it's our first line of defense against that bay.
Right.
And now we're gonna say, we're gonna cut out, I don't, well, when you say four months, I guess you're thinking, what, January, February, are they not? How many bulkheads are going in in winter months? January, February, are they on the water doing this stuff?
Repairs.
Let me just add.
Oh, depends on the, the temperature, the weather.
We had a property at 40196th Street and the hurricane marilized the bulkhead and we had to have bulkheads put in. And they were done in January and February, I mean, it was, they were working full-time, it was not, it was not that they're not working, they were working.
Is that an emergency or is that usually what happens?
I don't know.
I mean, there can be obviously a mild winter when, sure, and that's, that, then there can be terror, you can't count on that.
But we're just talking two months, we're not talking a third of the year, we're talking two months.
I'm saying you could have.
For this ordinance.
You can have.
Weather can be perfect, weather can be whatever.
So daylight plays a factor into it in the winter too, your days are cut short even for construction, so you're, you're up against that with, with bulkheads and construction and in the middle of winter, when that sun drops, you know, you're 3:30, 4:00, it starts getting dark, gets a hell of a lot colder, and when that, you know the wind on the water, so there's no guarantees. So, you know, you're talking up to four or five months that if we shut it down two months in the summer, conceivably, progress definitely slows December, January, February on bulkheads, bulkhead work. Now, you have a mild winter, sure, it could, it could still continue, but can't count on that. And I think it flies in the face of what we're, what we're trying to do here.
You're, I think, on a, on a, correct me if I'm wrong, but aren't, when you put in a new bulkhead, you need to notice all the neighbors, correct, all the property owners?
Should be, yes.
Yes, so, anybody who's renting houses, I mean, this isn't something that somebody says, let's, I decide I'm gonna put a bulkhead in, let's put one in next week. This takes some time and planning, so the neighbors know what's going on, so if they're renting houses out, you would think they'd have some obligation to talk to their renters who are coming in and they would know.
Well, their biggest prior approval would be the DEP.
DEP's certified, right.
That's their biggest hurdle, time-wise.
As with all arguments, there's, it's not an argument, but there's two sides, there's two sides to this. And I, I just hate, I just hate, as I said earlier, to stop the progression that we've gotten started here. I, you know, I would urge us to continue on.
If I'm reading this correctly, I'm looking, I, I feel like we're at a three-to-three split. I'm not seeing a consensus on addressing, on changing this. So, somebody correct me if I'm wrong.
What is the proposal to change it?
To allow the bulkheads, that, basically, that the driving of pilings in this ordinance is referring to the residential construction and not the putting in of bulkheads.
Mike, my, back to my question that I asked before. The, the most, the person who came to you with the most urgency in getting his bulkhead done, let's think about him. When is he ready to start? Did he say, I am ready, I have all my permits, I'm, all I need is your clearance and then I'm gonna go ahead? Or, you know, maybe he's planning to do this later in the summer anyway, if that's the case, that he's not gonna do it till August 15th, we tell him to do it September 1st. Do you have any?
You're gonna find that they're gonna wanna do that anyway, they, they won't do it in the middle of the summer like that, I haven't had anybody specifically.
So is this a moot point?
No, I don't think so.
It needs, definitely needs to be clarified, no matter what.
Like you're saying, but we also have houses that have already been demolished on the bay, or new construction's going up, or they may be looking to put a new bulkhead in.
And most of those contractors are well aware of the fact that we have a noise ordinance with our construction and that we want it all done before the holiday begins, before the season begins.
I, I think you can pass this off as more of a flood mitigation, more of a serious situation than, than just constructing a new home and that there should be a year-round process.
That.
In, in my opinion, I mean, I don't think we should deter flood mitigation in any way when it comes to that. If they have the time to do it and there's the opportunity and the people are ready for it, why not allow it?
And if, if we did allow it, just from the ones that you've talked to so far, do you see any that could be happening yet this summer?
No, not that I know of right now, I mean, we don't have, you don't have any permits right now, do you, for?
Whatever comes in, they go in and out, so we're not holding any.
So there's no point of urgency right now, right now?
Most of these companies, they, they will, they'll get the permits in and they'll get these, these permits ready to, to drop the hammer after the season's done too. So they're ready to go, doesn't necessarily mean they're gonna do it as soon as we issue that permit. They like to secure these things and get them ready too, so.
So then by the same token, you don't think there's gonna be, gonna be a flood into the construction office to get bulkhead permits than if we do allow them?
Not because of that, no, there, there, like, there were a couple of contractors that did ask about that, maybe specifically a couple of bulkheads and that was it. Not a flood of, of new permits for that right now, no.
Can we just, for this year, do it on a case-by-case basis? If something does come this summer, it's up to Jill to make that decision if this is indeed urgent and it should be taken care of right away. Otherwise, let's just build it into our ordinance one way or the other.
Well, it's the solicitor's.
I said, the engineer has to review the application, so I would think if he deems it structurally that it needs to get done right away, I think he should have the ability to do that.
Then he could be, he could be the arbitrator.
I'd be looking at him for that.
I say we give it to the engineer, not me.
Right, it's going against, but it's actually going against what the solicitor just said, don't leave this stuff up for interpretation and subjectivity, let's get specific about what we allow.
What it could do is build into the ordinance that provision that, you know, applications are reviewed on a case-by-case basis by the engineer who makes the determination, if that's the direction to decide, so that he can determine the level of urgency, is there health, safety and welfare consideration?
Correct.
Or not.
So just to be clear, so, so our role right now in the ordinance is to take in an application that's been previously designed by another engineer, for whatever reason that may be. Property owner wants it done, structural issues, et cetera, we're reviewing it for content and checklist, not to say, hey, I think this is a really great idea, they do this, because I have actual knowledge that the bulkhead is compromised. So now we would be put in a position where we'd be rendering an opinion on something that's been designed by another engineer. So our role is to go, check, 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 meets the ordinance, everything's in order. Back over to Mike's office and then we get called for like three periodic inspections.
I would think that if, if they're coming in and asking for the exemption because it's an, they, they deem it an emergency, their engineer would have to certify that to, to you.
Isn't that already in effect at this point, if it's failing, Mike can do it, he can allow it, I mean, isn't that already in place?
Should just be able to allow it anyway, correct.
He, he can already allow a failing bulkhead already. So really the question at hand is, do we want to allow the person who's building a new house, they're renovating, they're at 6.2, they're at 6 foot, they're at 5.5, they're the ones that wanna go to 8, are we gonna let them do that bulkhead? That's, the other things he's already permitted to do, so we don't have to change the ordinance to reflect that.
And your ordinance requires that bulkhead to be brought up to 8 once it meets the threshold of substantial improvement.
True. Okay, go back to what you were saying, before someone puts up a new house on the bay, they are required to put their bulkhead at 8 foot, whatever. So that gets done before the house and the pilings start, that's.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
In order for them to get their CO, they would have to have their bulkhead in compliance. But they could.
Houses are, houses can be.
Could technically build a house first.
They can do it from the water, waterward side of the, of the bulkhead, yeah.
Never mind, because there's a house that went up that the bulkhead's not very high and it's a brand-new house, and that just confused me that I thought when a house went down, before they do anything else on that property, they were required to raise their bulkhead.
No, they can do the bulkhead anytime. A lot of times, people will purchase the property, then they have to go through DEP, but they could also go into Mike's, they have their plans ready to go, they go into Mike's office, pull a permit for the house, get started on the house. 90 days, 120 days later, they get the permit from DEP and then they call up.
And you also have to remember is, if you have to raise the bulkhead, doesn't necessarily mean it's a replacement, it could just be an extension.
Right.
And that's above the high, the mean-high water line, there's no permitting required.
So we have new houses that possibly the bulkheads are not at 8 foot now?
That I can't speak to, I can only speak to what we. Could be. But they won't.
There's no CO issued.
Right, until it's done.
I'm just saying, you can start building the house, you could conceivably complete the house and put the bulkhead in afterwards, you just, it doesn't have to go, I know what you're thinking, that that would be the natural progression, I'm just telling you it's not necessarily the case because of the delay involved.
That really blows my mind.
There were a few homes out there, November was when our bulkhead issue became current.
Yeah.
If the homeowner stamped his permit in prior to November, and these homes do take a while.
Oh, yeah.
And those homes could have been built prior to the bulkhead ordinance being.
I understand that part, I'm just saying if the lot is empty, the house is down, and the bulkhead is 6 foot or 4 foot or 5 foot, you're telling.
Technically, from a, a prior approval standpoint, they'd have to, they wouldn't get a CO until it was finished.
More than likely, if it's a replacement, they're gonna do it, but if it's an extension, they probably can do it a little bit after, after building.
Right.
So we go back and check these houses that are built on the bay, and we look in the backyard, and the bulkhead's not been done, what happens?
Or a new house you're talking about?
New house.
Well, the, part of the process would be for them to prove that their bulkhead was raised before I issue a CO.
Wow.
Okay.
Another piece of the puzzle, puzzle before they get the CO.
So here's what we're gonna do, cause we got a couple of other things we gotta discuss, we're gonna revisit this in our regular council meeting, where we can actually vote, because at this point, we can't do any formal action. So, we're gonna revisit this under discussion at the regular council meeting and at that time, we can get specific and call for a vote on how we wanna handle this. So, we're gonna move on then to the freestanding signs, sandwich boards, signs is basically what we're looking at here. Do we wanna allow them in the off-season and if so, how are we gonna regulate it?
We all have this one, right, the highlighted one? The only thing, question I have on the highlighted one is I'm just gonna read it, freestanding signs and signs on the top of the building shall not be permitted. What, do we, what does that mean? The, because I don't think that we should be dealing with any, changing anything, I didn't know we had something, on the top of the building. What kind of signs are we putting on tops of buildings? I, I don't want that to be part of the sandwich sign thing.
I, I think they're two separate signs, a sandwich sign and a sign on top of the building, when you speak of a sign on top of a building.
The amount that's.
Heaven forbid.
Right, heaven forbid, did you?
Mounded on top of buildings such as if you went down Wildwood's boardwalk, there's signs on top of.
Okay, so you mean.
That we're saying that's not allowed, right now the current ordinance says that's not allowed.
Well, I don't, I think.
Neither are freestanding signs allowed right now. So that's what we, we wanna separate those.
Thank you, thank you, that's what I was asking for, good, okay, cause I don't want us to start putting signs on the tops of the buildings. Ouch, yeah, okay. The rest of them that are highlighted, I think makes sense.
What, I think the, I think, I think Josie brought this up last month, I guess, about allowing these on the shoulder seasons, and I, and I agree with her, I think there's no harm done there, that people can advertise their business a little more when the, when the crowds aren't here. And, and reading through the rest of it, I don't know why certain parts are highlighted and some parts aren't, but what I'd like to see, when I get back to Section D, we're talking about flags and banners and whatnot, balloons, temporary advertising, I would like to see something in this ordinance that specifies what, just exactly what real estate agents are permitted to do when they have a three-hour or a four-hour open house. Because right now, the way I read this, the only thing they're allowed to do is put an open house sign in front of the property.
True.
Now, you know, the main thoroughfares of First, Second and Third Avenue in town here, it, it real, you know, you can ride up and down those streets, which people do to transit the island, and to have a, an open house sign on the lawn in the middle of the block, only people who really live on that block are gonna see it, I mean, you could put an open house sign like on Linden Lane and no one would ever see it if there wasn't some directional sign out on the corner that says, hey, there's an open house down this street. So, I mean, I think, I think the real estate business is probably, I might be wrong, but it's probably the biggest industry on this island. And to not let them put a directional sign on each corner of that block that says, hey, down here there's, you know, that can direct people to go down there. And if you talk about a flagstick, you know, the, the way this, this is written now, you've gotta go get a permit to stick a flagstick up, you gotta get a permit from the borough to do it, and you're only allowed to do it once a year. You know, I think if we put a paragraph in here that strictly addresses real, the real estate agents and say that, look, you can have these directional signs, one at, at the end of each block, only for the time that the house is open, you can't put them up before the open house. And when the open house is done, you have to make sure you take them down and take them with you, certainly nothing left up overnight, which I've seen before, and nothing on, on public property, you know.
Right, that, that's what I was just thinking of, and where would it be if it's not on public property?
Well, first of all, we could probably talk about this another time, that was not the goal, because I'm gonna say that I don't think that we should allow anybody to put signs all over town and/or put in an ordinance that we can. The town gets so junked up right now and it's very hard to enforce it, so no matter what we did, if we said, oh, you can put three balloons out and you can put a sign here or there, it's not gonna work. We should not allow people to just decide to clutter this town with signs and banners and flags and balloons. My goal was just for the 96th Street, I, I understand where you're going, but I'm not going there, I don't think we should have signs in town, period. I don't think we should have sales signs, rent signs or any kind of signs. But that's not the subject, can we stay to the subject of just trying to get 96th Street safer in the summertime by not having the sandwich signs in the summertime, because we have an ordinance year-round for that? And just change it so that the people off-season can put a uniformed sandwich sign out to let people know off-season that they are open. That was my goal, if you wanna take the other one, go for it.
No, I, I understand, I understand what you're saying and I, like I already said, I agree with, with what you're interested in. All I'm saying is that if we don't want a bunch of flagsticks all over and stuff, which I agree, we don't want it to look like a circus.
It does.
And let's tell them.
Well, we need to enforce it.
What they're allowed to do.
Exactly.
Nothing.
This is what you're allowed to do and nothing else.
Isn't that already in here someplace, they're allowed to do one sign someplace on the property that day?
If I could, that's, the highlighting is, what, what I had done was I took our sign ordinance, and I broke it into three sections, a section for contractors, a section for real estate agents, and a section for the businesses, and that's what I highlighted. And I handed the business guys, "This pertains to businesses, this pertains to real estate agents, and, and somehow you guys have got the, all three together in one." I don't know how that happened, but it was.
Okay.
The only one you should have is the one we were talking about, sign board.
For the record, I have nothing to do with real estates.
Do we have, does it include what you would propose as far as a maximum size? Were we given that?
It's here, yeah. 36 by 24 for the san, we're back to sandwich signs.
Sandwich signs, 36 high, 24 wide.
Right.
Would be, the average sandwich board is right now, and that 36 is above elevation.
Gotcha.
Couldn't be 36 up in the air.
Right.
It would have to be 36 on ground, the maximum height.
Got it. And one sign per business.
Right.
Permitted only when the business is open.
Right.
Shall not exceed the 36 by 24 in width, must not be in the right-of-way, shall not extend past the property line, must be immediately taken down in inclement weather, and then add a section to our business registration to refer to freestanding sign rules, and have the person getting the permit sign the acknowledgement that they understand the rules.
And no lighting.
And no lighting, oh, I skipped that, thank you. That was there, wasn't it? Oh, yes, yes. I think you, I think you covered.
What we would want. The only.
Common sense concerns. Good job.
What, what's the normal, what's the normal distance on the, the property line? Like, you know, on Third Avenue, how far out from the structure normally?
Generally speaking, and, and I don't, I don't know if I would have to have everyone give me their, a survey. However, from the sidewalk, two to three feet towards the, away from the street is the general property line for, for the businesses. And, and that, that's where a lot of the problem comes in. If you run down 96th Street here, on the right side, the property line lines up with the awnings of the buildings. On the other side of the street, it's back about five feet. So, you could almost tell the people on the left side, you can have signs, but on this side you can't because of where the property lines fall. And, and that's where it becomes, I, I deal with a lot of phone calls about this issue. Well, they've got a sign across the street, well, technically, they're on their own property. They're not on public property where their sign is. It's.
I think it addresses what we wanted to address as far as the sandwich board signs in the business district in the off-season.
I agree.
I agree, too.
And then to Ray's point, it's something that can be looked at, you know, separate of this. But this, it, it won't stop us from being able to introduce changes and be able to have at least that sandwich board signs within the business district be introduced and ready for this year, and we can talk about your concerns. Am I good with that?
Yeah, I mean, just to add to Ray's point quick, I, I think many of us would, here, would be surprised how many people, on a nice day in the off-season, like to drive the island and go up and down, and they look for those open house signs. So, unless, and they'll drive Third Avenue, they'll drive Second Avenue, and they'll drive First Avenue, and they'll look to go down the street and just, you know, shop for a house. And if, if we don't put some kind of parameters, like Ray's saying, I don't think Ray's asking to help the real estate agency advertise anymore, you know, than they should be, but I think he's looking for some parameters. What, what should they be allowed to do? 'Cause right now, it seems like we're just doing different stuff, but I, I think we should allow them some level of deference, so that.
But they're not asking right now, so why are we open that box?
Well, I think Ray just.
And I think the issue's gonna come into the fact that it's gonna be on public property, and that's what's gonna get us in a jam.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
I think the only place to put it, rather than the property itself, is on public property.
Yeah, but we don't want that.
That's what I'm saying, it opens up a Pandora's Box when we start putting public property.
Right now, if they're on our public property, and every once in a while, they will put them on our islands, and Ray does have to go out and collect them.
Please don't do that. Please, please, please.
One would assume you can put them on private property if you get permission, so maybe that's the answer.
Right, right. Okay.
Telephone poles aren't private property.
No.
Nothing should be on the pole.
Cleanup day, we're gonna allow people to pick up.
Where's that one?
Is that in here? I'm looking. That's the subcode.
I can't.
Subcode, I'm still looking. Oh, solid waste, okay, got it. Let me see your cleanup days.
Well, we had talked about this before, right, in one of the other meetings, that I thought we were all in agreement.
Yeah, we just need to, yeah, see the ordinance and see if now, didn't the clerk say it's not in there?
No, Grant and I discussed this for quite a while. He said, "We thought the ordinance had to be changed." The place in the ordinance where you are, where you get a penalty is for picking up trash. In the cleanup, in the cleanup day ordinance, there's nothing in there about that. So, we don't have to change any ordinances at all. All we have to do is find a way, however you wanna know, to let people know they can come and get this.
Yeah, but we don't.
Two days before, the day of, whatever.
But the way this reads, it says, "Any person that's unauthorized by the borough," so are we gonna?
Is you looking at the trash area, or the cleanup day?
466-9.
That's the cleanup days. And we have in front of us the solid waste recycling.
It's two different ordinance.
466-5.
Oh, the backup. You have, you put a parenthesis around it, right? If, shall.
That's when I thought we would have to change something, but we don't, because that has to do with trash and garbage.
So, that would be the ordinance that was being used in the past to enforce not picking up on bulk days, would be this ordinance.
But the bulk ordinance itself doesn't say anything about, people can't come and get it, or use it, or pick it up another day or a day before.
I would suggest we get the right ordinance and the right wording and bring it back. To see, because I can see where there's some confusion, defined trash, refuge, garbage.
Well, that's it, I get, where, where does this say, Suzanne, that, that somebody, that somebody can't come in from out of town and pick up?
466-5, violation of this chapter for any person unauthorized by the Burrowstone Harbor or by the owner of the refused trash or garbage to collect or pick up, or cause to be collected or picked up. So, what they're talking about there is if you have an independent contractor, come and pick up your trash.
Right, right.
And it's not, I mean, so are we considering the bulk days trash? It's bulk trash.
That's what we call it.
Right. So, this, I would say this ordinance there is saying it's a violation, that that's the one we need to address. Grant, you're saying no? Come on up. Educate us.
Come on down.
Come on down.
I didn't bring the ordinance with me, but from what I read, the, um, the bulk trash ordinance just talks about putting your trash out. Putting your bulk out.
Right, it just deals with bulk, but the other one is all-encompassing, and it, it would, I would say, breeds to me that bulk is included in it.
Which number, 466?
Yeah, this is.
466-5.
This is cleanup day, that's your bulk days.
That's a collection of garbage, rubbish, and refu.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And when you read the language.
Refuge would be closest to.
Right, and it's saying, if you've got, if you have not arranged for an independent contractor to come pick this up, and you put it at your curb, nobody can take it with the borough.
Right.
That's what it's saying.
Right.
Right, and that's not saying, except for bulk trash, that doesn't count. So, that would be trash to me, that would be refuge, so this is the ordinance that needs to be changed. To allow it on the four days perhaps, but this is where it needs to be addressed, 'cause that's where the enforcement part is. Correct?
Why do we, why do we care?
Because we have an ordinance that says they can't take it, so we gotta get rid of it if we're gonna let people come and take it. That's why, 'cause we don't care if they take it. We've decided we don't care, but we've cared in the past. And there's an ordinance that says they can't take it.
So, if we take this section out, then we don't care if they come and get your trash either?
Right.
Or we just say, "Except, the exception is the four bulk days."
Four bulk trash days.
Exception would be the four bulk days, add it in that part in 466-5, and we're covered.
Sounds good to me.
Boom.
Nail it.
So, that's what we'll look at to adopt and introduce.
We'll bring that next meeting.
Matur looks a little annoyed.
Somebody remember. Remember what we just.
All right. We talked about the subcode fee changes. Anybody got any issues with that? The auditor recommended it.
Nope.
We can bring that forward for introduction. All right, Public Works report.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
Do it like you're a, on 78.
I'm not gonna hold you up.
You did a lot of work.
Did you read the reports?
Absolutely.
Do you have any questions on the reports?
No.
All right, I'm done. No, just a few things.
Thank you.
I don't know if you noticed, there is a, there is a borough seal on the outside of this building that has been missing for, how long, Rocky? A month? Anybody notice that?
Yes.
No, you didn't.
No, where was it?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I noticed one day that it was peeling and falling apart, so I had taken down, redone. So, you should take a look when you leave.
Good job.
Other than that.
Thank you.
Kiosses are in effect, especially the one out here in, in Borough Parking Lot. As Jim noted earlier in his talk, we do have some issues with our modems in the kiosk machines. Verizon updates, is updating to 4G, and they didn't get the modems to us, so we're having frequent outages. The kiosk machines collect all the data, but they don't push that data out for payment. Sometimes we have to go in and pull all that data down, and then send it up, so that the charges are, are sent out. So, we're having some frequent outages on that. And the kayak racks, they're calling me and saying I need to pick them up, some of them up, or delivered. So, they're coming, but I don't wanna put them in use until next season, because if I start putting them out, they're not numbered.
Oh, you mean our new ones are coming?
They're not auctioned, yes, the new ones are coming. So, they will be here within the next couple of weeks, a few of them. They wanna get them off of their property and brought down to here. And we are very busy.
Okay.
So, all of our departments are.
And this rear parking lot looks beautiful, the new parking lot. And the garden club added the hanging baskets, and really, did a nice job. It looked, it really looks nice.
Other than that, the road project on 95th Street is in a punch list mode right now, trying to get that button down. And our guys in the utilities department are collecting meter reads.
Anybody got anything for utilities, as well as Public Works? Okay.
All good.
All right, thanks, Grant.
All right, have a good fourth.
Yes, happy fourth. 425. No more items of discussion on the agenda. Anybody got anything for the last five minutes? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Reconvene at 4:30 for the regular.